I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can everybody hear us out there? I wasn't sure because I heard different. Madam Clerk, are there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda? That's going to go under his report.
Okay. No additions or deletions to the agenda tonight.
Can we ask for it to be quiet in the audience, please? Thank you very much. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular board meeting of May 18th, 2015?
Yes.
What's your correction?
There would be page three, page four, C2. I don't have a vote down there. I think I was here.
Are you sure?
What page?
I think it's on page four at the bottom for the chip and seal.
Yep. Apologize that, but could you please call me ahead of time so that way I would've procted it and had it here at the meeting tonight? I mean, just next time, Barb.
Sure.
So we'll add your vote in there. It was a no, correct?
You'll have to check the videotape. I'm sure it was, but to verify.
You don't remember how you voted?
It was on Maple Road.
Only two weeks ago.
You were a no. It was a no. I remember. Are there any other corrections? No? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the May 18th, 2015 meeting with the correction of trustee Verz, no vote on that action item for Maple Road, signify by saying aye to approve.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? And those meetings stand approved. We move on to reports. I just have a couple of things for the trustees. I wanted to let you know that Wednesday, June 3rd, Chief Sippert, Assistant Chief Berkeley, Controller Beth Takas, Tracy Tucker, and hopefully you, Madam Clerk, if you can meet with us. And trustee Verz, I sent you an email. Risk loss prevention for our liability insurance. They're going to meet with each one of these departments, Police Department, Fire Department, Cemetery, Parks, Building and Zoning and Planning and Zoning, and all our contracts. They'll be taking pictures. They're doing a walk-through of every building of the township. And they're going to identify any areas in which we can improve on as far as reducing our risk and having any potential loss due to lawsuits. And so I just wanted everyone else to know that they'll be here for majority of the day on Wednesday, and we'll be going from department to department, meeting with them. That is through our liability insurance. And again, that's Wednesday.
What time is that?
We start in the Police Department at 9:00 a.m. Chief Sippert and I are going to meet with them from 9:00 to 11:00. The Fire Retirement Board meets at 10:00, so that kind of takes out Assistant Chief Berkeley and Beth Takas. So then we'll come back, and I'm hoping to meet with the Clerk's Department for a few minutes on the cemetery records and the procedures of how we handle the cemetery. Then we'll go over to, in the Building Department, with planning, zoning, code enforcement and that. And trustee Verz, they wanted to meet with someone from the Parks and Recs Committee. I sent you a couple of emails. I don't know if you're available, but I don't know how many questions. We have one park and a playset, or a swing set, and they might ask questions about the trail and the canoe landing, but they're trying to get as much information together. So if you can make that either before or after lunch, that'd be great. So that's the first thing I wanted to mention to the trustees. The second thing I want to mention is that Deb Nebraska and I have been working on moving our workers' comp clinic. It's in the, where is that located? It's on Center Road, Dort Highway. Where is it?
Center.
Center. So was it last week or the week before?
Last week.
Last week. Assistant Chief Berkeley and I went and we met with urgent care on Linden Road, and we met with a few different physical therapy places that offer occupational therapy and speech therapy. When we have an injury from a work-related injury, our employees would either go to the emergency room, if it's a true emergency, or they go to the clinic. Well, I'd like to bring that to the township and have more input there so we have a better accounting of our workers' comp claims because they've been high the last couple of years. So we haven't made a decision yet, but we can let you know it's just where the township has the ability to choose where the worker goes when they're injured, if they get injured, on the job for the first 28 days of care. So we'll update you on that. We were impressed with what we saw over at urgent care here and with a couple of the physical therapy places on Linden Road. So I'll keep you updated on that. And lastly, you are all here, and I don't know, for those present of our residents, we had an audit at our last meeting, and I wanted to let you know that that audit is listed. It's filed at the state, and it was a good audit, and it's listed on our website, too. Our website is FlintTownship.org. You can look under Departments. You can look under Supervisors Department. You can look under Budgets and Audits. You can also find it under the second listing on the left. It's New Things Happening or News in the Township. You can find that listed under that. You click on that, and it'll take you to our budget and our audits, if you're interested. That's all I have for my report. Madam Clerk, do you have a report for us this evening?
No, not tonight.
Madam Treasurer, do you have a report for us this evening?
Motion, pay the bills, please.
Is there a second to the motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion in regards to that motion? No? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on the motion to pay the bills.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courtz, yes. Mr. Castle?
No.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll pay the bills. We'll move on to trustee reports. Are there any trustee reports this evening? Trustee Parker?
I just want to announce that the scrap tire drop-off will be held this Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00, or until the trailer is full. And again, it's a project that was funded by DQ, so it will not cost the township taxpayers any money.
It's in our parking lot, 10:00 a.m. till?
10:00 to 1:00. 1:00 or until it's full.
Alrighty, and you're going to be out there?
Yes.
Alrighty.
We'll look forward to that.
Alrighty. Anyone else? Trustee Verz?
Yes. I wanted to let everybody know that last Thursday, we had a trail cleanup with Atlanta's school, and we had 28 students and two teachers, and we collected 14 bags of garbage, and it was 118 pounds. The students did a little contest with the groups that divided up, who could bring the most back, and they weighed it. And my group won.
Very good.
But it went well. They were good kids.
So do we have any word on when the connection of the northeasterly leg of that trail is going to be? Do we know anything about that? We just see that it's being built?
Right. But I have no information.
I'll find out. We'll see what we can find out because they're going to put a connector, and that's going to take you to Kettering area.
Right.
The trail will connect and continue down the old railroad tracks to Kettering. This way, do we have any trustee reports?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. First, I'd, this Thursday, garbage was not picked up because Monday was a holiday, and so it was postponed until Friday. Unfortunately, though, the good majority of our residents put out their garbage anyway Thursday, and some didn't. And I do know that at the beginning of the year, we notify, I think through a mailing or email or something, the dates, the holiday dates, that it's not going to be picked up. I'm wondering if there's some way to inform our residents, either through email or some kind of a modern method to let our residents know when there's a holiday and that our normal day, which is Thursday, may be postponed by a day. I know it's posted on our website, but not too many people go to the website to find out information. So especially in the summertime, people put out their garbage on Wednesday night or Thursday morning, and it sits there for a couple of days. It's not a really good situation.
So I can contact M-Tara. They're the ones who would send the email. They don't have everybody's email address that they pick up the trash for, but there's five holidays that postpone trash pickup. And I will ask them if they can. We can announce it. It's on a flyer in the foyer. A flyer was sent to all the residents when we switched to Thursdays, but I will try and ask them to do that via email.
They do have our most email addresses because their rewards program requires them.
They have a lot, yes.
Okay.
So we'll ask.
Thank you. Another item, Madam Supervisor. I would like to inquire if there's been, if there are any plans or any progress have been made to appointing a new fire chief.
While we're working on negotiations, I know that we, as a board, have talked about maintaining status quo until we got some changes. So we are negotiating. We met, when did we meet? May 28th. We sat in negotiations for a couple hours with the Fire Department. They are trying to help us with scheduling and covering with supervisory on every shift. So I'm pleased with the progress. No, we don't have a fire chief in place right now. Chief Berkeley has been temporarily taking over the duties in the Fire Department, but we're still in negotiations, and I don't have any more news than that. Do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Treasurer Benelli or Madam Clerk?
No. I think you covered that.
Well, why are negotiations necessary in order to appoint or propose a fire chief?
Well...
Whether it's the present assistant fire chief or not, we don't negotiate with a union on the appointment of our chief, do we?
No. I have no other update. You were in the same closed session meeting that I was when we discussed this, and everyone was sitting there. I don't know, I have no other information.
I was in a closed session meeting when we discussed a fire chief?
When we were talking about moving forward on the Fire Department. Yes, you were.
Well, I will urge the supervisor to, the delay in appointing a fire chief may not be good for the township and how long she intends to delay this.
I think we went quite a while without a fire chief.
Yeah.
Not too long ago, if I remember correctly.
Assistant Chief Raleigh was assistant chief for over two years, and I think you were on the board when that happened. So I don't know that we're in a rush at this point to do that. I think that this board made it clear to our labor attorney that we were going to look for changes in the contract and hold status quo temporarily.
Okay, so I guess the answer is you don't intend to appoint a fire chief. If that's the answer, that's the answer.
That's not what I said.
Well, that's what I get out of your explanation.
That's not what I understand at all.
Let me ask, understanding may be different to me.
Let me ask a question. How long is negotiations going to take?
We've been scheduling. We've already met a few times. You know, again, I...
Will we have it settled in the six months, or?
I hope so. Absolutely.
You think so?
I don't have a magic ball to look into and tell you that answer. I'm hoping so.
But you're on the inside. You should know everything.
Well, you can take one of the spots.
Mine's available. Would you like to take my seat?
What does it pay?
It doesn't pay me any different than it pays you.
Well, you get paid, don't you?
So I don't think we're going to be discussing that.
You're a part-time.
We had a discussion in closed session with our labor attorney, and this board gave him clear instructions as to where, we didn't take a vote, but we gave him instructions on how we wanted to proceed. So, and all seven of us were there, unless I'm missing something, I thought it was pretty clear.
When did that closed session take place, Madam Supervisor?
We're not supposed to be discussing any...
Well, I'm just, because I don't remember a closed session discussing a fire chief.
It was pretty important.
Well, we can look in the records, and I can also have Steve Schultz contact you because I think it was pretty clear.
It might have been a missing, a meeting that I missed, although I don't think so.
No, you were there.
Maybe the closed session was just with the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer.
No, I was there.
No, it was before a regularly scheduled meeting, and all seven of us were present.
Okay.
So I think we should move on from here.
I agree.
Is there anything else you wanted to say, trustee Menudis?
No, ma'am. I've said enough.
Certainly.
I beg your pardon?
I said certainly. We move on to...
That's what I thought you said.
We move on to general reports. Chief Sippert, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do. I have a couple of things. Over the years, we've had a lot of different characters show up at the Police Department, and we've had a lot of interesting people that have, we've had to lock up there. But we had an interesting incident happen on May 23rd. Our officers were dispatched to Cabot Drive, and the resident had discovered in their garage a baby deer, which was a fawn, and it hadn't been there, well, it'd been there for quite some time. They tried to wait for the mother to show up, and she never did show up. And so the officers tried to contact various animal rescues here in Genesee County, and they were either unable or unwilling to come get the fawn. The officer, which was Officer Knopp, was then able to contact Saving Tails Animal Rescue. His in-laws worked closely with that group, and they agreed that they could come get the fawn, but it would be several hours. So the deer was loaded into a police car and brought back to the Police Department and locked in our garage for several hours, where it behaved very well and seemed to calm down. And since that time, they've picked it up, and the West, or the Saving Tails Animal Rescue has been working with the DNR to try to find a place for the rescued fawn. So that was a first for us. And I also wanted to share with the board, as you know, I believe it's the board's policy and same that makes it our policy that we try to use Michigan companies when possible, and if, better yet, if it's a Flint Township-based company, we'd rather use them. But we have been purchasing our body armor for quite a few years now from a company called Armor Express, and they've been in business for about 10 years. The company that was there before Armor Express was actually Second Chance Vests, and that started back in the, I believe, late mid-'70s, where the owner would shoot himself in the chest with a revolver to show that his body armor worked. And he made quite a name for himself, and that's the company that we now purchase our body armor from, Armor Express, and they're located in Central Lake, Michigan. And their body armor, their product, was the vest that Officer Michael Schuyler was wearing when he was shot in the line of duty at the Hometown Inn back in January. So they invited him, this company invited him, his wife, and his child up to Central Lake. They had a whole weekend event up there, and he was able to meet with the sales staff, with the administrative staff, and with the workers that actually produced the product that he was wearing. And he told me about it today, that it was a great experience. He shared his story with them, and he said it was a great step in helping not only his physical healing, but his mental healing and the healing of the soul. So we were happy that he was able to do that. We're happy that it was a Michigan company, and we're happy that they treated our employee the way that they did. And we look forward to using them for many years in the future. That's my report.
Thank you. Assistant Chief Berkeley?
Yes, thank you. I have a few things. We had some career days, and if I can draw your attention over to the sidewall over here. Sergeant McClanahan put together a, attended a career day at Carmine Ingraham last month. He put together this board here to take there, to show people about being a firefighter, being either taking it down the career line or being just a volunteer or on-call firefighter, which we take care of both of them here at Flint Township as a combination department. So he put together that, a flyer over there, and I did leave it out over there. We are taking applications for on-call firefighter and hopefully in the near future, full-time firefighters. But the information over there is about us at the Fire Department here, what we do and in that area there. So if you have any questions, you can get with me afterwards. And again, we are accepting applications for on-call firefighter. We have some in the process. We're still working on to get the stuff done and hopefully have some people in the Fire Academy this fall for on-call. Also, I'm pleased to announce that we received a grant from the 100 Club of Genesee in Lapeer County for $1,500. They award safety items to firefighters, police agencies. I'm not sure if they're giving them to EMS or us with police, fire agencies. So we will be getting a grant for $1,500. We will be using that to buy fire gloves. Fire gloves, we go through very fast. They get lost, they get damaged at fires by using, you know, the tools and hands, and a lot of the damage at fires and accident scenes and stuff like that. So gloves is something we use on a regular basis. We're pleased to be able to get a grant from them on that. Also, we had a fire last, it would be on the 23rd. It was a house fire at Darby. Building was about 50% involved upon arrival, middle of the afternoon, 1:30 in the afternoon. We called in assistance from Schwartz Creek and Flashing Fire to assist us on this. We work with mutual aid companies very close in our area, depending on it is. We respond to Monday Township and assist them at fires. Red Cross was brought in to help these people. They lacked some insurance of the renter. They were renting the house. So also, we had a vehicle truck that had to go in for basically emergency repair. One of our engines had a radiator leak. After the mechanic looked at it, the entire radiator was rotted out at the bottom. We had to have the radiator replaced. That came to $54, 3191. Madam Supervisor, as an emergency repair, she signed the PO, and we're going to process that. It wasn't unable to make it to the board before that, but the truck is being repaired, and it will be back in service soon. That was one of our lead engines. We did have a problem with some of the radiator. They were aluminum radiators, they're not like the ones, well, none of the newer cars are aluminum, but they were getting leaves between them. That's something that we just discovered, and we are going to maintain that and make sure that doesn't happen again between there. Also, that brings me into the, I'd like to request, there's a letter I gave tonight or a memo to the Township Board. I'd like to request that the Board of Trustees to have the Township Supervisor, Madam Supervisor Miller, request Civil Service Board to establish a full-time firefighter eligibility list. I'd just like to let you know, we aren't obligated to hire these people, but it takes a while to get that list rolling as negotiations go on, and I'm very positive and confident that we will come to that and get Station One staffed again and get this ball rolling in firefighter. That starts with that, and then goes up to, if we do anything more with eligibility lists for lieutenant and captain. So, Madam Supervisor?
Is that the end of your report?
Yes.
I have a question for him.
Yes.
Chief, what was that figure again for that radiator? You said $55, $55.39?
$5,500.
$5,431.
I didn't hear that thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, it's over our limit there, so...
What's the number again?
And that's why I asked Assistant Chief Berkeley to mention it during his report this evening, because it is over the amount that I can sign for, but our policy states when it's an urgent matter or an emergency that I can sign for that, and I wanted everyone to be aware of that, that it was a $5,431 expense, and the work was done and then I signed for it because it had to be done. Anyway, in regards to the request from Assistant Chief Berkeley, this is something that came up during negotiations, and hiring police or fire takes a very long time, and the first step in doing so, you heard Assistant Chief Berkeley talking about taking applications for paid-on-call. They can do that directly to the Fire Department. They would pick up an application here at the Clerk's Office for paid-on-call position. The only way to become a firefighter or police officer in Flint Township is to go through civil service, and a list has to be established in order to do so, and that would be the first step. I know that we're not ready to hire someone tomorrow, but they meet once a month to establish a list and to get eligible names. It will take a while, and the first step in doing so is to at least get civil service to establish a list. And so I move, I move to establish, have the Township Board approve the supervisor to ask civil service to establish a list for full-time firefighter eligibility, and a second would be in order to that motion.
I will second.
We open it up for discussion?
So this is an addition to our agenda?
No, it's not on the agenda. It's part of his report. It's a simple request. Any other discussion? Any further questions? How long is this list good for?
It should be good for two years, and again, it does take, it's a lengthy process. The application period, the testing period, and physical agility, setting stuff up, and then at that point, it kind of stops. We could even stop it before physical agility, and you know, if we have a lot of applicants. The Police Department has had trouble getting applicants, so we might have problems getting applicants for these positions. It's hard to say. But it should be a process. It's, again, and we're not obligated to do anything with this list. Civil service should be maintaining the list at all times, and they haven't. We haven't wrote a list for, I'm going to say, five or longer, five years or longer. So again, we're not obligated. You're not obligated as a board to hire these people. It's just a process that we're getting place once we get it all established.
Any further questions, Madam Clerk?
I know that we've had some discussion in regards to this. They have to still take the time to set criteria for this, too, and what their expectations of a full-time firefighter would be. So there's still work ahead of us before the decision can be made. It's just going to be a while.
I understand.
Well, Madam Supervisor, I think the chief's request is well-considered and is certainly appropriate, and I'm for that. I also want to say, Chief, that my discussion of hiring a new chief, or looking for a new chief, I in no way am objecting to your status as acting chief right? Are you acting chief right now?
I'm still the assistant chief.
Or still, would it be appropriate for the board to make you acting chief at some point?
That was not done, but you can make me eventually. We can write that test and get it permanent.
Well, you are acting as acting chief right now, right?
I'm taking care of business.
Okay. I mean, you might think about that, Madam Supervisor.
We have, and it's clearly outlined in their contract.
Okay.
Trustee Menudis, did you have anything?
Oh, ma'am.
Did you say something?
No.
Alrighty, are we done discussing? Any further questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on approving the supervisor to request the Civil Service Board to establish a full-time firefighter eligibility list.
Ms. Benelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courtz, yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vert?
No.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We've come to the end of your report?
Yes, we have. Thank you.
We move on to Mrs. Tucker.
The only thing I wanted to mention is we are in noxious weed season, so if you have a property in your neighborhood that needs some attention, please give our department a call. You can talk to Denora. She's our new noxious weeds code enforcement officer, and actually, any of the three can write for weed. So if you need to get in contact with us, just call the main line, and we'll help you out. That's it.
Thank you. So we're done with reports. We move on to public comment. If you'd like to address the board, I ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to address the board.
My name is...
got a couple items that I'd like to speak on tonight. One of the items is liberty and justice for all. Last couple meetings, after everybody says that, I've been mentioning liberty and justice for all. Because I feel we're falling a little bit short with regard to liberty and justice for all. State of Michigan voters made a resounding vote. 83% said that they did not want a sales tax with all the amenities that were attached to that. That's quite a punch in the nose for Mr. Snyder, our governor. And I think that's probably why he is not running for president. They spent, and I questioned this because I questioned a couple of the news reporters, because I didn't feel that both sides of the stories were being told with regard to, and I called Channel 12. And I said, you got everything pro with regard to passing this, and they basically spent $9 million. And this money was based on some money from the state for a bus for the governor to go around and make all these speeches through people that would profit from this millage being passed. Now, if that $9 million would have been put towards roads, we would have had quite a few roads fixed, right? Okay. The point that I'm trying to make is here, at the state of Michigan, they have $59.5 billion in the state budget. Now, right now, they're quibbling over some deals with regard to Pure Michigan and Michigan Act. And they want to take money out of that, but the government is against, the governor is against that because of the fact that he does not want to take that money out because it's going to detrimental to Michigan and business and everything like that. There's what they call sacred cows. We've got sacred cows at the state level, and we've got sacred cows right here. We passed a millage 3.85 mils. We tried to get a renewal of .5 for roads, and it was resoundingly voted down. The people do not want any further taxes. If we want to fix our roads, $3.5 million or $3.85 mils and $3 million a year coming into that frees up money in our budget. That money was okay to give everybody raises, but is it there so that we can fix our roads?
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
They're sacred cows.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Good afternoon. It drains 1148 Carter Drive. Have two incidents, two reasons why I'm here. They have a storm drain through the pavement. It got a great big lift and you see how it drive over. Therefore, it needs to be fixed again. I don't know if they will fix it or not. I hope they do. Police came out of Carter Drive.
How far from your house is it?
Right, right in front of my house. And so, they need to fix that. And there also is a house to be sold at $1358 Carter Drive. Grass need cutting, very bad.
Thank you.
Therefore, those two incidents, I would like to take care of.
$1350?
$58.
$58?
Make it through to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Burns, you have two minutes left, two seconds left.
You have though.
Mr. Leverett, Gene Leverett from 5210 Sandy View Drive. I'm here in regards somewhat of the same issues that Ella Burns was just talking about. But, we was set up well enough to get our streets repaved there. And I've been waiting for them to come out and finish the job. They need to do some repairs to it. They left some water holes in the street and they need to come out and fix them. As well, all of the loose gravel come from this new pavement. It settles on the curb. And we have a cleanup process here in the township, don't we?
No, we don't.
What happened?
We, the township, I think at one point before I was on the board, had contracted a pilot program to have the streets swept. Your roads are maintained by the Genesee County Road Commission. I've talked to the supervisor at the garage to finish that job. Also, the road commission's supposed to sweep, and I don't know what their schedule is. I can find out, but we're at their mercy. So, I need to get back with the Schwartz Creek Garage again and talk to them about your road. And I don't know when they are going to be street sweeping. I've seen them doing some of the major roads, but I don't know when they're going to do the neighborhood roads.
Well, I'd like for them to kind of, you know, get on the job because see what's going to happen is all those stones is going to settle in the drain, in the sewer.
Understand. It's all along Linden Road.
And next thing you know, we've got a bigger problem.
I agree 100%.
So, I call myself trying to help them out by getting up a few, but.
Good job.
It's excessive all the way through the township. So.
I will make them aware of that.
Okay.
I'll see if we can get an answer.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Greg Remington. I live at 11495 Lytle Road.
Can you repeat that, please?
11495 Lytle Road. It's not in Flint Township.
11495.
4, 11, 11495.
495.
L-Y-T-L-E.
O-Y-T. I'm sorry.
R-D.
Got that. And your name again?
Greg Remington.
Thank you.
I'm a business agent with Local 948, the electricians in Flint. Represent roughly 400 electricians in Lapeer, Chiawassee and Genesee County. I also sat on the GLS building trades. You've been in front of us before, Madam Clerk. The building trades represents 15,000 skilled tradesmen and women between Lapeer, Chiawassee and Genesee County. I'm here to express a couple concerns specifically about your building department. No offense, Tracy, we've spoke before, about your electrical inspector. I understand he spends, he lives in Howell, and he spends about five here, five hours here on Tuesday and five hours here on Thursday. And I know that because he's told me, him and I have a, well, sometimes we talk if he answers the phone. I myself, I spend a lot of time in Flint Township doing my job. My job is to go meet unrepresented workers. I'm a union organizer, so to speak, but I meet a lot of guys. And I just, in Michigan, you know, we have a, there's a State Electrical Administration Act of 1956. It's the law. It's a law that you have to be either a registered apprentice or a licensed electrician in the state of Michigan. There's no helpers. There's no in-between. I mean, these are laws that you can actually, some counties have actually went after these people when they've been given an opportunity. I've had several conversations with your electrical inspector. I just find it kind of amazing that I can go out practically any day of the week and before noon, find an unlicensed electrician working up on Miller Road. Most of these guys that have a license in their pocket, they're proud to tell you. And you can usually find out when there's not one. You know, you can, I can usually tell if a guy doesn't have a license in his pocket. Basically, I don't know how much time I got. There's no clock, but, you know, and another thing I wanted to address was your no-fine, no-fee permitting. I've contacted the building department about several projects in Flint Township this year where there's been no permit pulled. And your guys' policy is no fine, no fee for a late permit or no permit, which sends a clear message to a contractor. If I was a contractor and I was a cheating contractor, it would, the message to me would be, why spend that 400 bucks unless you get caught? You know, a lot of municipalities I talk to, I've done this at quite a few boards, they do have a policy. Up on Miller Road, I've run into like, for instance, I'll give you some examples, at the Eyeglass Warehouse, a couple of weeks ago, pulled in there, your inspector was there, went in, had a conversation with two apprentices there by themselves, come back out, told him. He drove away. He didn't even go back in. It was not a big violation, but a clear violation. And that's kind of what I'm here to address. And across the street, Texas Roadhouse, I mean, the fact that it was built with about 20 guys staying in two motel rooms down off of Miller Road from Texas, seriously, they, there wasn't any local workers on there. I don't know if your municipality offers any incentives to hire local workers or anything like that. Is that it?
I bet your time is up.
Okay. All right. I just, one last thing. I think your inspector should be local. He should live local. He should eat here. He should shop here. And he should be up here. He should care about what goes on as you guys are rebuilding Miller Road right now. And if you need, and I've got several names I can throw at you, guys that live in Flint Township that would love that job and they're qualified.
I know we met before.
We did. You and I stood right on my sidewalk outside my office and talked.
Can we get your phone number, too, please?
Yeah, 810-767-3308. Or, if you want my cell number, you can have that, too. That's my office.
Try this one first.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Question. Does that mean our electrician is not?
He's licensed, that's what he said.
He's not local, he's licensed.
He's licensed. Mike has a.
We talked about a list before.
Right. Mike got his master's license like 33 years ago. They had to dig deep in the archives in Lansing, trust me. But, when they found it, I was like, 33 years ago? That's what the guy, that's what he told me. So, yeah, he is. I don't know if the inspectors have to go to code updates, like I have to carry my license. I have to code update every three years. I have to take safety classes. I don't know if the inspectors have to do that.
Like most people do.
He's licensed, and we also have a list of others who are licensed.
Right, right. I'm just saying, I just know he doesn't live local, and I talked to a lot of people that would love to do that job because they eat here, they shop here, they spend money here.
Thank you very much. Oh, you weren't done. Sorry. How about if we meet afterward?
Sure.
Oh, that was the last line. I'll be available to afterwards.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
I'm back again. Lyndon Neiman, 5378 Maple Tree Drive, Flint, Michigan. It's been brought to my attention through recent meetings that Flint Township does not have weights and measures, and the road commission does not either, and that the only municipality that does have weights and measures happens to be in Schwartz Creek. To the extent of how it works, how it operates, et cetera, I'm not sure. But, I am aware that subdivision roads are not built, I've checked that out, to handle double tandem trucks that we are allowing. And I think we need to investigate how we might stop some of that that's going on and utilize weights and measures and get some enforcement for that to happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Neiman.
Yeah, my name's John Whiteside. I live on 2161 Elms Road, Schwartz Creek. I want to address also the election. I'm on the Flint Township Road Advisory Committee. I've been the secretary of the committee since the beginning of the road committee, almost 10 years. During this time, we worked hard, two different supervisors who's chair of the road advisory committee. I'm disappointed that the township residents didn't fill the need to renew the road millage. Whether or not the township board decides to put the renewal on the ballot in November remains to be seen. Having served on the committee since inception, I'm extremely proud of the members of the road advisory committee and their commitment to the process for the betterment of Flint Township. Road Advisory Committee has pinched every penny possible to spread the tax dollars to fix and maintain roads to the best of our ability. As newly committed members, we had a lot of learning to do. We worked through with the township supervisors, Genesee County Road Commission, the Schwartz Creek Garage supervisors to service Flint Township and learn how roads are evaluated, repaired, and work diligently for Flint Township residents in the community, in our community roads. This has been a learning curve, finding ways to get the most bang for our buck. The committee was a volunteer committee of people selected by the previous supervisor from submitted resumes, and then we were all interviewed. Some of the faces has changed on this committee over time. One constant has been the committee has worked hard, worked hundreds and not thousands of hours volunteering their time for the betterment of the Flint Township roads. Countless hours the committee spent driving the roads, holding our committee meetings, meeting with members of the road commission, meeting with concerned residents, all the while volunteering our time to improve these roads. We were even asked a few years ago to create a four-year plan so the township could continue to get the 50/50 match from the Genesee County Road Commission, because without such a match or without such a plan, the township wouldn't get those dollars from the road commission. The committee stood up and handled the task. This plan will have to be continually updated by someone or those dollars will be lost. I want to thank my fellow committee members for all their hard work and commitment to this committee. I feel we have done a great job planning and maintaining of the roads the best we could with the limited revenue and declining revenue each year. I also want to thank the township board for the opportunity to serve on that township road committee. Thank you.
John, I wanted to say thank you to you, too, because of all, of all the members, I think that you showed up most, you were always there. And you took those minutes, and that's a tedious chore, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Anyhow, you put a lot of your time and energy and resources into it, and you did a good job. You organized those minutes well to make those recommendations on how to spend that money, the $5 million that we spent over the 10 years. And I want to say thank you. And I know this board is looking at putting that back on the ballot and it's a matter of the process. So, I wanted to say thank you very much and recognize the hard work that you did as secretary on that committee.
We've got to thank all the committee members.
Yes, we do.
They all did a lot of work.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Madam Supervisor, in regard to what you just said, I would certainly urge you to, or us to make sure it gets on the ballot for November. And I've asked the clerk to make sure when that has to go on. I might also comment in response to Mr. Roberts' comments about the loss of that millage. That loss was a very close call. It was only a few votes. So, it wasn't an outstanding, it wasn't a significant rejection, although it was rejected. And maybe part of the reason was that there wasn't a lot of work put in in advertising and promoting it at the township level, which was, which was a mistake, certainly. So, I would hope we would get it on the November ballot. And if we work towards getting it passed, then we will have the, our, our millage back. The road advisory commission is still in existence, at least through the year, because we are collecting money, right, still? Okay.
Back to public comment.
Dave Huthman, 2483 Warner Road. I would like to second what Mr. Whiteside said about the road committee. I sat on that road committee for the period of time since it was concepted in the township. And we did do a lot of work. We spent countless of volunteer hours, not taking a penny for the betterment of Flint Township. And I would have to concur that I was pretty loyal, but I wasn't as loyal as John. John was the main point guy. He is a great multitasker. He cares about the township. And everybody was committing, you know, I was, took this job very seriously, too. But, I have to say, John went above and beyond the call of duty. And it was a tremendous committee. I hated to see the millage go down because I thought the township residents, for anything that I'd ever spent, seen money spent out in this township, it was one of the most constructive. We pinched every penny. We worked a lot of hours. My only regret is that we never got a map like we were going to on the wall here at the public meeting to show all our efforts over the last year. So, when the residents came in here to the meetings, they would have something to go on. And I'm hoping maybe one of these days that that will happen. My other comment is, talking about the fire that we had down on Darby Street a few days ago, I was listening real closely to what the acting chief had to say about, we had to have support system from, what was it, Schwartz Creek and Flushing?
Yes.
And I just had to sit and comprehend that statement for a little bit because it seems to me last November. to me last November that we passed a 3.85 public safety millage for fire and police personnel at a 10-year, $30 million commitment. And yet we have a fire station right here, three minutes down from Darby Street, and it's been put on part-time personnel or part-time fire call capability where we couldn't respond to a fire right down the street for all this new influx of money. And I just wonder, is that going to change with this thing that we passed six months ago or is this just going to stay the same or what happened there? That was my question. I was appalled to hear that.
So we function with mutual aid in police and fire, how long, years, 20, 30, 50?
It's been going on for many, many years. We have a signed agreement amongst the entire county. If we have a large, large fire, the entire county will come to help us for no cost.
And I understand that.
Thank you.
The only thing I don't understand is though, this situation that happened a few days ago, couldn't we responded to this right down the street quicker if it would have been full-time personnel?
Our response time was within the average response time of Flint Township's responses to fire. If you want to talk to Assistant Chief Berkeley.
Okay. But we did pass a huge millage which we're all paying for, so that's why I'm asking, Karen. Don't.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? No, so we'll move on to new business. Chief Sipper, action item A.
You have in your packet a short memo from Lieutenant Batinkoff who heads up our, the Genesee County Justice Assistant Grant. And we need to set a public hearing for, hopefully for the June 15 meeting that will give residents from Genesee County the opportunity to come in and express what they would like that money spent on. We don't have the exact figure yet for what we will receive, but Lieutenant Batinkoff estimates it'll be around $30,000. But this is still all in the workings and we just need to set a public hearing for next.
Madam Clerk, you said you had the total number?
I don't have it with me right now. It was sent to me, but that's for the next meeting, so I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what it is.
We can make that.
We'll make it for the next meeting so they're aware of what we're going to get.
So we'll set the public meeting for June 15, 2015 on the JAG grant, right?
Yes, 2015.
Which one's that? Thank you. Action item B is to pay the dues for the MTA membership. You have that before you, a motion would be in order to do so.
So move. Board.
Is there questions or discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call please on approving the $5,719.59 for the MTA membership dues.
Ms. Courts? Yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vert?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Action item C, Chief Sipper.
Just a point of clarification before we move to that. Does point A need to be voted on or no?
When we set public? No.
Okay, all right. Action item C, also you have a correspondence and some information in your board packet. As you know, we have six vacant budgeted positions, unfilled positions in the police department, and we have been steadily working at filling those positions. And I have, I don't have them here before you, but there are two individuals that I would like to have hired effective June 15. That gives them two weeks to let their current employers know, give two-week notice. The first one is Christopher Miller. He's a graduate of LaPierre High School. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice from McComb Community College. He also graduated from their police academy and he's currently working as a part-time police officer for the Genesee Township Police Department. The second individual is Stephen Douglas Moore. He's a graduate of Romulus High School. He obtained a bachelor's degree in electronic media from Eastern Michigan University and electronic tech certificate from Michigan State University. He also graduated from Mott Community College Law Enforcement Regional Training Academy, just graduated this past April. So he is a licensed police officer also. They have both passed their background investigation, their physical examination, drug test, and psychological examination and requesting that they be hired effective June 15.
A motion would be in order to do so?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second for a discussion.
And did you want to discuss?
I want to ask a question. Are any of these two potential officers live in Genesee County?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions for Chief Sipper? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call please on the hiring of Christopher Miller and Douglas Moore effective June 15.
Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vert?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courts? Yes. Motion carries.
And so Chief Sipper, where does that bring us to on the number?
That would bring us up to 36. We have 40 budgeted positions, so anticipate having another four candidates in the next three or four months. But we will have, civil service will have to test again because our list is almost dried out.
Thank you. So you have criteria already for that list and that's something where the next step we'll work on with.
Yes, the Civil Service Commission established what the minimum requirements are and they should do the same for firefighters.
So that's their job to set that criteria or do they?
It is their responsibility, but I certainly think they take into account what the board, what opinions the board have on that matter.
Thank you. Action item D is consider adoption agreement, 457B, deferred compensation for on-call firefighters. You have this information before you. The effective date would be June 1, that's today, June 2015. So this is recommended by our attorney, Steve Schultz, and I don't.
It's in their contract.
Yeah, it is in their contract. I don't, we didn't have any phone calls of any questions in regards to this. A motion would be in order to move forward on this?
Motion to support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Question. I know what it says here, the employer shall be the administrator of the plan. It's not costing the township anything, it's just the employees participating in their own funding, just as long as I understand. Thank you.
Yep. It's for the MAFF, Michigan Associated Firefighters, their contract. And you're right, it's just the employee contribution and the township would administer. With there being no further discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call please on adopting the 457B deferred compensation for on-call firefighters.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vert?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courts? Yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action item E is to consider posting for the budgeted position in the assessment department. So our assessor, Bill Fowler, has provided for you the job description. And I asked if there were any questions, if you would contact him last week or even today, has he made himself available for any questions from the trustees. And Nermina, who was a level three assessor, has left us. Her last day was May 28. And having taken an assessing class recently and realizing the importance and the value of having an appraiser along with an assessor because you can't assess without appraising, I bring this before you, a motion would be in order to post for this position for appraiser.
I will move the posting of the position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion?
I do have a question. Why are we not using the feasibility study?
Specifically asked that you would speak with Bill Fowler on that?
You did ask me on Thursday afternoon at 12, yes. And we've known about Nermina leaving for months, but the question is, is we have a feasibility study.
We do.
That we paid for.
We did.
Has some very good ideas in it and we have yet to implement anything in there.
And he is. Did you speak with Mr. Fowler?
I did not.
He is implementing and this is.
Asked me on Thursday at 12 noon prior to another meeting if I was available. I was not. So I'm letting you know, I did not speak to him. It was very last minute for me, for me. I'm only speaking for myself.
We need to have an appraiser. We used to have an appraiser, he's no longer here. We have one level three assessor, we have a level four assessor who works part-time. Our assessment department needs more than one level three assessor and one part-time level four assessor. We need an appraiser. That's the bottom line. And he's reassigning duties and he's following some of that efficiency study. And I don't know what more to say. He can explain it better, that's why I asked you if you would contact him.
Correct. At noon on Thursday. So it's the end of the week and I'm not going to state that again. It was not convenient for me knowing that this person was leaving for months. I am not supporting this.
That's fine. Any other further questions or discussion?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I would not be supporting this either because due to the feasibility study, and I know you're saying we, you know, talked to Mr. Fowler, but the feasibility study is very clear on what route the township should take in order to comply with what was recommended.
All right. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, roll call please on posting for budgeted position in the assessment department for an appraiser.
Mrs. Vert?
No.
Mrs. Parker?
No.
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Courts? Yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That brings us to the end of our.
Just for clarification, in regards to action with item A, I really would feel comfortable if we were to have a motion.
All those in favor of setting the public hearing for the JAG grant, June 15, 2015, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The hearing's set. With no further business and without objection, this meeting's adjourned.